Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the December meeting of the Geneva City Council. Happy holidays, everybody, and we'll call the meeting to order and start with a pledge allegiance to the flag. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Galanese?
Here.
Counselor Noon, Counselor Burrow?
Here.
Counselor Peeler?
Here.
Counselor Regan?
Here.
Counselor Camera?
Here.
Counselor Salamendra?
Here.
Counselor Brim?
Here.
Mayor Valentino?
Here.
Thank you.
We're going to start with an update from our supervisor, Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, and good evening. Hello, everyone. Before I forget, thank you for this appointment. I didn't want that to get lost in the process. Very appreciative. What I'm going to do is just hit on three major points. One is what I've been involved in so far, have to keep these on. In 2022, over the last three months that I've been going to the two committees that I've been appointed to, same ones that Supervisor Vidura was appointed to, Public Works, Government Ops, and Insurance, as well as the monthly board meetings or the every three week board meetings. And then talk a little bit about some data related to Geneva residents that I've been privy to, mostly just through the committees. And what I won't go into is that long list of things that I still need to learn in order to be more valuable to you and provide better reports going forward. Believe me, I'm well aware of that. There's so much to keep track of and so much information, and I suspect that I will be appointed to at least one different committee in the new year as a result. So, and then questions. So with 2022, as you are probably aware, the 2023 proposed budget is on the county website already, and it has some really nice detail on it. Couple of things that I think are worth noting in terms of the budget considerations that affect all of us as county residents, in particular those of us in the city of Geneva. One is that there are, of course, mandated costs, mandated budget requirements for the department's social services. But it seems that all of the counties, and I know this from my own professional work, all counties are being made aware of the increased need for mental health services, particularly for youth and particularly for children, and that will impact all budgets. And that's expected to be clarified in the coming year in terms of the amounts. But that is a clear and present need as a result largely of the pandemic, which I think we were all reminded of as citizens. The other is additional funds coming to us as a result of the pandemic, and I think those are pretty much known at this point. But there are more funds expect, there is, there are more funds expected as a result of the opioid settlement that is going to all counties. The exact amount, I'm not able to articulate right now. So there is the annual organizational meeting, which will be January 5th at the county, and that's when the new committee assignments will take place. The Geneva office is an issue that you are all aware of. There are no Geneva services being offered formally in the county, and that's something that I have been talking and finding out more about. Suffice to say, two things. One, for right now, for the foreseeable, the offices will remain closed as a result of the pandemic. But hopefully by quarter two, we will know where we stand in terms of any opportunities to reopen an office or a combination of offices there. So that is something that you can expect me to provide you updates on in the new year as that information is known. There are just some data, including everything from pets to electronic waste as it relates to the city. There were eighty-seven complaints registered about pets during the month of November. Thirty-six percent of those complaints came from the city of Geneva. I think we scored the highest on that.
Thirty-seven percent?
Yes, thirty-six percent of those were from the city of Geneva. And there were twenty-six animals admitted during November, and at the end of November, there were a total of seventy-four animals at the animal shelter in Jermaine Society. Also, switching to humans now, there is an Office for the Aging gift tree. Unfortunately, it's in the lobby in Kennedigwa. But if you and/or constituents who are listening want to call the Office for the Aging, perhaps arrangements can be made for a gift to be identified from the tree that's in the Office for the Aging for any city residents who need a gift at this time of year. I think there is a deadline for that, and I think it's like December 11th. So I wanted to mention that. I mentioned electronic waste at the October 22nd electronic waste event drop-off, which was also hazardous wastes. And I mentioned this in an newsletter that I sent to a fledgling list of email recipients in wards one and two. Maybe some of you received it. I'll be sending out another one before the end of the year. On October 22nd, a total of forty-seven city residents participated in that drop-off for hazardous and/or electronic waste. I don't know offhand when the next one is. So two hearings that are coming up, the first, the next one is again short notice, December 8th, Board of Supervisors hearing. It's a public hearing regarding increases in Ontario County Supervisor salaries. And those are proposed for, I think, just under $3,000, something like that. So that is known as Local Law Seven, and the hearing for that is tomorrow. And if anyone wants to email me, I can provide the call-in numbers for that. You don't have to be there to give testimony about that. Yes, yes.
Ballpark Supervisor salaries sort of like fourteen, fifteen, and three thousand more.
That is correct, Ken. And that does not include any of the additional chairmanship, yep, compensation for that work. I have been involved in several conversations around speaking about the board meetings themselves, about getting individuals to provide privilege of the floor testimony about the landfill. And since I've been on the Board of Supervisors, there have been, I think, three individuals from Geneva who have provided testimony or comments about the landfill. And tomorrow, there is another person that I've been involved with recruiting for that. Again, not again, but for that privilege of the floor, individuals are required to go through their respective supervisor and ask for their three minutes of time to provide that testimony. Okay. Any other questions?
I have two, if that's okay. So are you looking for people who feel strongly about the landfill to contact you? Are you looking for more people to comment on it, or are you?
Oh, it's ongoing, Counselor. Yes.
And the second question is on the appointments. Will you have say in that? Is there a particular interest?
Yes, and I've made my interests known based upon my professional background as well as my current appointment. So we'll see.
Great. Good luck.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Counselor Regan?
I am curious about, this has been brought up before to other supervisors. I think Geneva is anxious to see one of these e-waste drops or collections happen in Geneva. They seem so frequently to be in Kennedigwa or Victor or wherever. So any fight you can put in to get one locally, I think that would be well supported by all of Geneva.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I will carry that forward. Yes.
I'm thinking that maybe I either heard you incorrectly, or maybe there was a misspeak. As of today, Ontario County is providing services on Sonica Street. Did you mean to reference DMV services?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure because as of today, we were offering services there in social services. So thank you for that.
I'm sorry. Yes.
And it's okay. Thanks for that correction. And then also, I'm, I was one of the forty-seven Geneva residents to participate in the e-waste October 22nd. And because I brought a, literally a trailer load of stuff over there, and, and kudos to Cornell Cooperative Extension, who actually organizes this. And I had a really nice conversation while I was waiting in this long line, extremely well organized, about who funds all of this. And I actually didn't realize that the Ontario County taxpayer actually funds e-waste. We actually have to pay the people to come and pick this up. So as something as important to this and as infrequent of, of a pickup that there is, everyone in this room has e-waste that they're generating, I would say, at least once or twice a year, whether it's their handheld computer or their mouse. And, and I, you know, I, I'm very hesitant about putting anything in the landfill. So I don't know if there's anything to do as far as fundraising or municipal budget expense as far as the importance of e-waste. And how can that be done more frequently, actually all across America, not just Geneva?
Okay.
But, you know, I couldn't even get an appointment for a drop-off prior to this last one, October 22nd. They were full, and I was actually put on a waiting list.
Okay.
And that's, that's actually quite discouraging when, when you have a room with twenty electronic components, if you will, that you want to recycle and keep out of the landfill.
Okay.
So it is a possibility, I think, that it could be in a next budget if municipalities could actually include this as an expense and a contribution on the importance of reduce, reuse, and recycle e-waste.
Okay. Thank you. Frequency, location, and cost.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Microphone, please. I'm sorry. You said you're on two committees, the Public Works Committee and the Insurance?
Government Operations slash Insurance.
Oh, Government Ops.
And Insurance.
Okay, and the other one is Public Works?
Correct.
Okay, got it. And you're looking at getting on maybe another committee as well?
No, it probably would be a replacement for one of those other ones. So I've made my, my wishes known. So it would probably just be two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Appreciate the report.
Just a couple more comments, and then I'll be done. Mayor, thank you. So looking forward to 2023, I am aware most recently of the Planning Board work that's being done relative to the needs of Geneva, countywide housing and greenway, as well as improved communications with the Board of Supervisors. So I'll be finding out and schooling myself more on that as I have more contacts with the Geneva representatives to the Planning Board. Mentioned the Geneva City Offices. I am going to be participating in the December 28th full comprehensive Board of Supervisors orientation because of the rapidity and the responsiveness of this council to the appointment, which led to me being on the Board of Supervisors. There was really just a sort of a very quick orientation. So I'll be participating in that later this month, which I look forward to. And I think that's it, and I thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you for your engagement. We appreciate it. Okay, um, we needed to change the agenda. Counselor Camera would like to have one of the items removed, so I believe we need a motion to change, to modify the agenda to remove New Business Number B, Resolution of Support of Climate Action Control. I believe Counselor Camera, you want to do a little homework on that before we do it?
Yeah, I just have a, I completely support this, but it's a very long and detailed resolution, and I'd like to go back over it again. I read it over a couple of times. The very first time I thought about proposing this, and I read it over again today, and it's, it's, it's complex. I want to read it and be really comfortable. So that's the reason I'd like to just put it on the next, next month's agenda. Okay?
Okay, so we've got a motion to modify the agenda. We have a second by Counselor Galanese. Any comments on modifying the agenda? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is a DRA update by our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, and city councilors, and good evening. On behalf of the DPW, Barton and La Judas, and Nardozia Construction, we want to please thank all residents, business owners, and visitors for their continued patience. Work completed to date. As of the last progress meeting site walkthrough held Friday, November 4th, 2022, the contractor has used 100% of the contract time and has completed 88% of the proposed work. The current draft pay estimate number fourteen dated November 23rd, 2022, shows completed work to date was 8.8 million out of 10.2 million. The contract substantial completion date was at, was at end of October 2022. The contractor has submitted requests for substantial completion, acceptance, pay quantity discrepancy, review, and contract extensions of time, which are all being investigated. Upcoming work schedule. For Contract One, the five-and-twenty-quarter continues to be in Phase 1C. Work is not yet completed on all underground electrical work, traffic signal updates, landscaping, and permanent signage. Work Zone Traffic Control will continue until all proposed traffic signal work can be properly installed. For Contract Two, the streetscape in Five Points continue to be in Phase 2C. Work is not yet completed on all underground electrical work, traffic signal upgrades, and landscaping. Some concerns with the Bezuto rain collection structure is not complete. For electrical, the subcontractor traffic signal material and equipment delays continue. And for the budget, they anticipate that all final completed contractor work to come in right at or just under the original base bid of 10.2 million to approximately 9.8 million. And that'll be it.
Thank you. Next is the Foundry update by our city clerk.
For remedial design, the DEC's engineering contractor continued remedial design activities for remaining properties located south of Lewis Street on Genesee, Geneva and Tillman Streets. Designs were completed for ten properties in this area, east of Geneva Street and north of Tillman. Structural inspections were completed at two properties on Geneva and Tillman Streets. Remediation of all properties south of Lewis Street is expected to be performed in 2023. Remedial designs were completed for 60 Middle Street, which has been used as a project staging area. Trailers, material, and equipment are being removed from the parcel, and remedial excavation is anticipated to be conducted in January 2023. A community update fact sheet will be prepared and sent to property owners and other community stakeholders in early 2023. Remedial construction excavation is, was completed at Genesee Park, including around the large oak tree and three other trees that were protected, protected in place. Some of the replacement trees are anticipated to be planted this month. The city completed installation of new electrical service throughout the park, supported by the project coordinator. The central sidewalk will be installed by the project mason in the spring of 2023, along with the new concrete features being installed by the city. Additional replacement trees and plantings will also be planted in the spring of 2023. In consultation with the city, the park will be closed for the winter. Excavation and restoration activities were substantially completed on the north and east sides of St. Peter's Church along Lewis and Geneva Streets. Replacement trees are being installed at properties both east and west of Exchange Street. An additional replacement trees, plants, and trees will be installed in the spring of 2023. The project contractor will continue performing some restoration and demobilization work in December, but no new excavation will be performed until January. Therefore, the DEC anticipates the next project update we provided prior to the February 2023 monthly council meeting. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Galanese?
I ask a question pertaining to the Genesee Park remediation. So I'm not sure if it was last meeting or the meeting, October meeting, but I had asked, we had voted on additional funding for Genesee Park in upwards to over $300,000, pretty much a blank check. And now that we're, we broke ground on Genesee Park, do we have an estimated cost of how much of that money that was asked from this council when we voted on and approved it when Sage was here? We, we, we don't know at this point how much additional cost it's going to be. I mean, we are...
I'm sure we do have that estimate. I don't have it in front of me right now, and I, you don't either. Yes.
We do have it? Okay.
Yep.
I mean, I think that that's very important to know. I mean, it was pretty much a blank check, and shovels are in the ground now, and we still don't know what that number is.
And to that point, do, and do we know the scope of work that's associated with it? What was that? Can you refresh my memories?
It was of the design?
I was just going to say that the DPW, Joe Vannuti, has emailed out the design for Genesee Park and what is going on, like, almost weekly. So...
Right, but not cost.
Not cost, but the work we don't need to go over. It seems like the cost question will be answered tomorrow.
Design of that gentleman that came up in front of us in the presentation.
Like that, okay, that's the little amphitheater and that kind of stuff. Okay. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to say that if you are a neighbor of Genesee Park or have interest in, or opinions on the statue, to please reach out, send me an email, and I will be in touch.
Next, we have a presentation by Jewel Assets.
I arrived with the committee. So thank you very much for having us. First of all, my name's Jessica Stromback. I'm the CEO of Jewel Assets, and we are in the region today. Otherwise, I wanted to take this opportunity to come to the city along with Shannon, who's here locally, my colleague. The purpose of our little presentation today is just to talk through the next steps and kicking off the Community Choice Aggregation Electricity Supply offering. So which is something that you would be doing with the town of Geneva. This will be there. They have had two successful CCA electricity supply contracts. This will be their third, and it would be the first time that the city of Geneva would be joining them. So let me go over a little bit how the program works and then talk through next steps about what would be involved in, in the next steps of exploring this option for the city. I think it's important just to know that at this stage, the city is not taking any decisions. This is an exploratory and public education phase of this program. So like I said, the, the purpose of CCA Electricity Supply is to bring stability and transparency to the electricity markets. This last year, for Jewels subscribers, this has been a really valuable resource. Electricity costs are going up. They have become increasingly unstable. It's harder and harder for people to manage their budgets under these circumstances. And we're really happy that during this last year, in these circumstances, our residents who are in participating municipalities have saved over $11 million on their electricity bill. So it's a, it's effective. You can't be guaranteed that you will always save, but what it does do is it brings stability and, and knowledge about, about what your bill's going to be looking like. The other thing that I think's great, you know, useful for the city to know is that today, CCA forms the lion's share of the free market renewables markets in New York State. And this is because group purchasing powers is powerful. When you come to a business, to a competitive business, and you're bringing a large group of residents with you, all of a sudden, you can negotiate better contracting terms. You can negotiate more transparent contracting terms, and you can negotiate a better price and a renewable for even for standard or for renewable electricity supply. So that's what the program is about. What it, what is involved is that this next phase would be an outreach and education phase. It involves doing things like posting some language on the website, and Hannah and Shannon are the ones that are in charge of that, so I'm really happy to have them with us tonight so they can go over a little bit how that would look. Yeah, and then we can go from there. Before they dig in, do you have any questions for me that you'd like to bring up? Sure.
I just want to ask a question. This is for new subscriptions. In other words, are there people already in the program, right?
There are no people in the program in the city of Geneva, only at the town.
Yeah, but I'm in the city, but I've signed up for the, the town one. If I'm in that...
You actually can't sign up from the town one unless you live there. Unless somebody slipped you through. That's good. Congratulations.
The lines are sometimes a little funny with the, it's the utility who decides.
So you want to speak into the microphone?
Utility who decides who is eligible. So sometimes at the edges of towns and cities and villages, the utility might say you're in this, this area, even though your, your, your address is for the city.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding. What was the other organization that was with the town? Wasn't it called something Rock?
Oh, Rocktricity.
Rock, Rock. Is that a competitor?
No, that's a partner. So Shannon is actually from the former Rocktricity. Rocktricity, part of the team decided to move on in their careers, and the other part of the team decided that they wanted a life and quit working. I don't know. That's a decision some of us make. And so that's what is with them. But, but Shannon has joined the Jewel team, and so we're, we're working together that way.
Okay, so that's maybe how I ended up with, in the town program, because I remember being asked, and there'd be a presentation, and in city people's encouraged to go to a presentation, and we could, we could, we could sign up. So...
That's great.
So the thing is, is though, if I'm in that program still, then I can't participate in this one unless I get out of it, correct?
Well, not really, because you will be automatically, what's going to happen, assuming the city moves forward, what will happen is, is that next time round, the town and the city will be in the same program together. It won't matter where people live, and everyone will be just joined. If the city does not move forward, there is the chance that you, you'd perhaps be kicked out of the program if the utility noticed. They didn't notice, you still get to sneak in. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Peeler?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So this council has already voted to join into a community aggregate program with Jewel is because of the, I guess, the dissolving of Rocktricity. Do we have to start over?
No, there's nothing.
To explore?
There's, there's not really anything to explore, but there's, the outreach and education phase is pre-contracting. So what happens is that now we're in the outreach and education phase. We'll, we'll kick that off next week, right? That's a sixty-day process. After that process, you will go, we will conduct an RFP, so a request for proposals. There'll be a competitive bidding process. At that point, the city will see the pricing and the contracting terms, and they'll be able to see how competitive that pricing is, what's the availability of renewables, all those things. And then you sign the contract, and then the, the, the program is officially launched. What we don't want to do is educate the public about something that's, that, that sounds as if we're committing the city to a contract you haven't seen, because you haven't seen the pricing and you haven't seen the contracting terms of the final electricity supply agreement. So we were careful in our outreach and education to educate about this opportunity that the city is exploring, but not to commit the city to signing at the, at the end. Because you might, I mean, basically, everyone signs, to be honest. It's very unusual that people decide not to sign at the last moment. But, but, you know, you need to have the ability to, to choose at that point.
I understand. I guess where I'm confused is, is if the city's partnering with the town, does that mean the town has to sign an entire new contract for the RF, for the, for the, for the, for the RFP or whatever is going to be sent out? Because if we're joining them... for the RFP or whatever is going to be sent out? Because if we're joining them, wouldn't we just be attaching ourselves to their current system?
Sorry, I didn't answer your question very well then. Um, uh, you're both going out for a new contract. So they will see the same pricing you do.
Okay, so that's, that clears up some stuff because Ken's right. I mean, we, we were approached by the town to join into the, the town system. I mean, Jacob Fox was the, he was the liaison for the town. And so that, and some, we're all familiar with that. So it just.
Great. Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just trying to figure out if we were to join with the town system, would they also be receiving new rates?
Yes, they will be. So everybody will receive new rates. Everybody will be having, uh, the, the updated contracting terms. And everyone will start this, not, they're restarting, they're continuing their program, but you are joining in at a point where you're all on a, we're going to use the fact that you're working together and make sure to get you, you know, just that much better terms. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And for one, one follow-up, maybe because I'm, and I'm really appreciate, appreciating you guys being here today to answer questions because really this is a consumer issue that's going to affect every resident when, when this council, uh, you know, signs up for this and signs them up for it, you know, um. Can you kind of bullet point or summarize how this is more stable than what they're currently, uh, purchasing? From, I guess, I guess we, we're NICEg.
Sure. So, so NICEg pay, uh, prices change every month, right? So, and you don't know why, there's no way to ask, you can't investigate, why did they suddenly go up? Why did they suddenly go down? You also can't negotiate contracting terms. Um, and with, within a CCA, uh, we, there's two offerings that are going to be on the table. One, the price will be fixed for eighteen to twenty-four months. Right? You can choose. So that is very, very stable. There will other, also be a shorter term option. Uh, if people would like for four months at a time that it's, that it's fixed. But either way, um, you, it's a transparent process. You are able to answer, ask questions as well. Um, and those prices are known. So it's not a guessing game.
So to be clear, the stability is in pricing and with the transparency around the pricing, it's not necessarily stability in service or stability in electrical delivery or anything like that.
That remains the same.
Correct.
So that the delivery is exactly the same. Yeah.
And billing also remains the same. This is basically just a line item change on people's. This is just a line item change on people's NICEg bill. They'll still receive the same billing. They'll still receive the same services from NICEg. And a question that we get often is, you know, well, if I'm switching to a CCA program, how does that impact what NICEg thinks of, you know, me as a customer? And NICEg does not make money off of the supply portion of the bill, so it does not impact their relationship with the, with the utility.
So, and I'm not sure if you're going to answer or add more to this, but, um, one of the things we always get asked is opt-in, opt-out. So if a decision comes before this council, what would that decision lead to? Opt-in, opt-out, is there?
Uh, so the CCA, the reason that we're able to negotiate on the behalf of residents on, in, under favorable terms is because of the group purchasing power. Um, the, a- and therefore CCA is always an opt-out program. Within that, we'll have, uh, options that are opt-in. So a resident can choose to go more renewable, less renewable, whatever it is, right? But it is an opt-out program. Um, New York State, just to give you some background on that. Um, New York State became a competitive electricity market in the nineteen nineties. Which means that any resident can always choose a supplier, right? The, today, the, the, the choice that's made, it's made in Albany for everyone. So CCA adds a choice. So maybe Hannah, if you'd like to speak more to that, go for it.
Sure. So with the, the current options that a community, people in a community that do not have CCA have is they can either stick with the utility. The utility buys electricity on their behalf. Again, the rates change. Unfortunately, unfortunately, the utilities don't have the ability to negotiate long-term or hedge, you know, to, to lock in price stability. So they can either be with the utility, this variable rate, or they can sign a third-party supplier, an ESCO agreement, which a small percentage of people throughout the state have signed. And this has been an option again since the late nineteen nineties. But a lot of people are not aware of that or, you know, don't take that option because they're signing an individual contract. There might be cancellation fees, terms, et cetera. What CCA does is it takes that option, the third start, third-party supplier option, and allows municipalities to go out, out on behalf of all the residents to lock in a better rate than even an individual could get. Because you can't go to a cable supplier or something and negotiate for a good rate on your own. With the CCA program, it allows municipalities to go and negotiate for, for all their residents and give this third option. So people can still, still be with NICEg if they would like to. People can still sign a third-party ESCO agreement. And there'll be this new option, which is the CCA option, which is this collective, collective contract. And they can join or leave at any time with no fees or penalties because again, the individuals are not signing a contract.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm glad that you're here to explain some of this and clarify for us. Um, if you would, while we're on the opt-out, um, describe exactly how that would happen. You already mentioned there's no penalties.
Yes.
Um, and, um, as an aside, I would point out, we're in an opt-out program now, uh, through NICEg. So this would just be changing the default supplier. But, uh, if you could explain both in advance of when the program kicks in and then what happens once we have this in place? Um, how someone can get out, you know, what is that process like?
Sure. That's a good, that's a great question. So again, this is switching, the CCA program is switching the default to this, this more stable price option. So if the city moves forward and signs a contract, then we have a note, a notification period where we, everyone who is eligible is sent a letter um, that explains what the pricing is, what the terms of the contract are, and all the ways for them to opt out. This allows people, before the program has even begun, to leave the program. They don't have to participate. And in that letter, we explain three options to opt out. They can call our helpline. I worked on the helpline for over a year. Very simple. Call less than two minutes. You give a couple pieces of information. We're happy to answer your questions. We're not trying to get anyone to stay in the program. We're there to support and help. You can call and opt out. You can go on our website and opt out through a form on the website, providing the same information you'd provide over the phone. Or in the letter, we have a prepaid envelope with an opt-out card. All they have to do is sign, date it, stick it in the mail during that opt-out period, and we will opt them out of the program. If the thirty days have passed, the program has launched, they're in the program. Anyone can also call us up, fill out that form on the website and opt out. Or even opt out and then choose a couple months later to opt back into the program. No penalty, no fee. Um, after, I will say that after the program has launched, it may take one or two billing cycles because that's just the process of changing a supplier in any case with the utility.
Thank you.
Counsel Burrell?
Um, thank you also for being here. This is a great refresher. Um, I, I believe everyone in the city was also solicited to participate in the town program. Um, but, but can you refresh, um, uh, my memory? Because a lot of information has gone over the waterfall of, uh, information. I know there was some financial benefit to a municipality saying, yes, we want to do that based on X number of people that, that actually choose to stay in the program. Can you review how that financial benefit works and what that estimated financial benefit is? I know the town of Geneva has been very transparent and has been publicizing what their actual financial benefit has been from a dollar standpoint in their last two years of engagement. And then I have one other quick question after this.
Do you want to think about the, they're giving, do you want to answer? I can answer.
Um, yeah, so there's a little bit of a difference. Earlier in the, the process, the town also went through an opt-in community solar program also through Jewel, which is a separate entity. It's a separate offering. Um, so that offered savings in the form of solar credits. It's separate from the electricity supply program. And as part of that, during the time Jewel was offering a giving back program where they would, um, give a certain number of funds to the town for every person that signed up. That would go towards a project for the community, whatever they choose, as long as it's, you know, somewhat sustainable, green, something like that. So that's what that was part of. And that was very early on into the adoption of community solar programs in New York State. So that was kind of an incentive. Um, the structure has changed more. So now we're focusing primarily on electricity supply for right now with solar to come as we have kind of waited for the New, New York State regulatory bodies to kind of iron out some of the, the changes that they have as solar has become more, more common and more available in New York State.
So, and I think what I'm hearing is that there's no monies coming into the taxpayer, uh, through this program. Uh, to, to, excuse me, back to the municipality.
Yes, yes.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that's good. Uh, and then my other question is, which is quick, uh, you mentioned that, um, some, um, electric users are not going to be eligible. Who, who would not be eligible to participate?
So, so I, on this, who's not eligible is people who are registered, um, to have a heat support program. So we're receiving funds, um, for heat, heating, heap support. Yeah. Mm-hmm. And then the others that we would not enroll are those that have already made their own choice. So if you've already chosen an electricity supplier of your own choice, then, then that choice sticks and we don't, we don't move those residents. Other than that, everybody's, everybody's eligible. Yeah, that. No, they can. It's because this, you can't join in the solar program. You can't. Well, you can't, you can't join in the solar program. So if we, if we did a solar offering, that's true. You, you wouldn't be in it, but for electricity supply, it's okay.
I couldn't join the town program and based on the last, based on the last set of consultation that we received, there was a part here that I also couldn't join. Any of the offerings would be the top.
Oh, well, then.
Largely the credits and.
Oh, it could have been the last person.
Uh, support and other renewable energy support comes down from the state. I've already paid all of that. Built my social.
Oh, yes.
I'm in that neighborhood. I'm in that neighborhood, so I'm an executive.
So, oh yeah, so there, this is a, this is an interesting distinction that comes up a lot. So, uh, most people are connected to the electricity, to the grid system, right? So there's two different categories we're going to, I'm going to talk about briefly. There is supply and then there is solar. Those are two different decisions that you can make. You can choose any combination from those categories, but you can't choose two within either of them. So for, again, saying that the city moves forward with the, with a CCA program, your options are sticking with the utility, buying electricity on your behalf, a third-party supplier, or participating in the CCA program. You can choose one of those. You can't choose two of them. You have to have a set supplier option on your utility bill. Then there is the solar category. You can choose to have no solar. You can choose to have your own, if you have an installed solar system on a roof or on your property, or you can subscribe to a solar farm. You can't own a solar project that's connected to your specific account and also subscribe to a solar farm. So again, you can only make one choice within each category, but they're, they are separate categories. Oh, yes, please.
Um, additionally, a lot of this confusion between the electricity supply and the solar is because the offerings have changed over the years since we've been having these conversations. When we go to renew these contracts later into the spring, it will only be electricity supply. So there will not be these confusing talks on solar. Solar may come in the future, but right now it'll just be supply. So when we try to educate residents, this hopefully will not, we won't have to deal as much with this. Um, and we can also clarify at that point as well.
Well.
For clarity, what we were solicited to at the Smith Opera House and that was solar and there were, had to be a minimum of four hundred and I think thirty people signed up. And part of that program was a stormwater prevention of some of that, some nature of that aspect. We would get back a certain percentage of that. And I think, and I think that that's what you were referring to because I was confused all the way until the engine, when she started separating solar into electricity.
We bring you.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So Regan?
Oh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I just have a brief point also to Counsel Burrell. Um, one thing that is a possibility that you, I, I don't know, you probably know a lot about this, but, um, uh, the, the, the clean energy community, is that, am I saying that correct?
Yeah, great.
Yeah, which we were named one, at the time it was only a hundred communities. We are named as one. You get credits in that program. We just got potential credits, um, when this council voted to, uh, bring in an educational program on heat pumps and how to, um, more sustainably heat your home. This is another program that we would get credits if we, once the town is up or the city's up and running with it. And that could bring back to the municipality, some sort of a financial benefit.
Can I just add on that particular point? You're not selling though, green energy. You're talking about a fuel mix that's based on the, on, on, on the, on the grid. In other words, it's a blended fuel mix of whatever our electricity is coming from, right? So that, so that it doesn't satisfy the, necessarily the sustainability.
It does satisfy.
So what's, what's in this electricity that we're, we would be signing up for?
So.
Is it, is it based on a clean energy? Like, wha- what is that? Solar, wind, hydro?
Yeah, solar, wind and hydro.
Okay, but is it, is it really solar and wind? I mean, hydro is hydro. It's an, it's a, it's, you know, we're, we're just reselling something that's already been built and has been around for a hundred years. Um, you know, we're not really increasing the, uh, the renewable energy component of.
Sure. Yeah, so the electricity that you would be purchasing through this is backed by tier-two REX renewable energy certificates that are retired in behalf of the, the contract. So that is the way that the New York State has decided to track renewable electricity produced within New York State. So the REX are what we use to confirm that the renewable energy is being purchased. And it is typically hydroelectric facilities here in New York State.
Okay, for the sake of time, I think you've heard from the majority of people on council that there's a lot of education that needs to take place. So we look forward to the next sixty days. Um, I think my last question would be, what is your rollout, um, plan for educating the public?
So we find that it's important to reach people in as many different avenues as possible. Some people use social, social media. Some people don't at all. Some people read the newspaper and some people don't at all. So we try to hit up as many different ways as possible. Shannon has worked on an outreach and education plan. Um, so if you can connect us or designate a person, that would be the best person for us to go through the details, um, with them. We will, we'll do that and we can talk about what press sources we think are best. Um, we will also be hosting public info sessions, at least two of them. We can do them in person. We can also do a virtual or a hybrid option, if that's something that you would like. Um, so that your community can come out, hear the presentation and ask their questions in real time. And you can also get that feedback and see what your community cares about or what they are interested in. We also try to tailor our communication as much to the community. So if you find that you're getting a specific, a lot about a specific question. For example, you might get a lot of questions about solar. We'll make sure that we really address and say that if you have solar, it doesn't impact your ability to participate in this program. Would you like to add?
Yeah, so I, I'm local. I'm actually right over in the Canadagua Farmington area. So it'll be most likely me doing the in-person presentations or a lot of the public information meetings. Um, and as part of our outreach and education, Jewel pays for all of the advertisements and mailers and things like that. So there's no cost to the city for this program. Um, and similarly, we've also done the outreach and education for the town of Geneva. So we are familiar with some of the more popular community boards, organizations, things like that, which we also try to rea, reach out to, to try to get as many people involved as possible. Um, so we kind of schedule all of that. And then throughout the outreach and education, we do connect with the city to make sure that everything that's going out looks good to you. We address the things that you need. We, we do the work for you, but we tailor it to your needs essentially.
Thank you. City manager, I imagine we have some kind of connection we can put in place. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of meeting minutes. We have to take October nineteenth by itself. I need a motion. My count.
I don't remember.
Um, Counsel Salamandra was the only one absent on the nineteenth. So Counsel Galanese's motion, second by Counsel Regan. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Galanese?
Hi.
Counsel Burrell?
Hi.
Counsel Peeler?
Hi.
Counsel Regan?
Hi.
Counsel Camera?
Hi.
Counsel Salamendra?
Stane.
Counsel Brim?
Hi.
Mayor Valentino?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Um, next is a motion for the November second and sixteenth. Everybody's.
Um, next is a motion for the November second and sixteenth. Everybody who's present, Counselor Galanese, seconded by Counselor Brim. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Hi.
Counselor Burl?
Hi.
Counselor Peeler?
Hi.
Counselor Reagan?
Hi.
Counselor Camera?
Hi.
Counselor Salamendra?
Hi.
Counselor Brim?
Hi.
Mayor Valentino?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Next is public comment. First on the list is Jessica Farrell, who has requested five minutes.
Hi, thank you. Um, my comments tonight are in reference to the study of GPD staffing levels. This report has a lot of important information and I'm grateful to have it as a resource. It answers some questions and it also raises questions. Per the city manager's request at your last meeting, I am sending my questions to Erica Collins, but I would also like to publicly raise certain concerns and encourage you to look into them as well. First is the fact that the report does not study or analyze how many sergeants we should have at all, even though it is clear that the number of sergeants impacts the report's recommendations for how many uniformed officers the department should have. So for example, on page eleven, um, the reports, uh, of the reports, it states that on page eleven, the report's conclusions of a need for more uniformed officers, and I quote, "may be somewhat diminished by the sergeant's positions." This is saying that were the study to examine the number of sergeants, it might draw different conclusions about the number of uniformed officers needed. But it didn't analyze sergeants, so it can't rule that out. So to reiterate, the report makes it clear that the number of sergeants impacts the number of uniformed officers needed. Um, but since this report starts its analysis from a presumption of how many sergeants the GPD has without analyzing or explaining that number, the report's conclusions about how many uniformed officers are needed are based on an incomplete picture and cannot be relied upon, I would say, without further information. But even if we put that gap in the foundation of the study aside, which I would argue you can't do it, but I'm gonna do it. Um, I'd also like to speak to the calculations that the report makes. And so I apologize for getting into the specifics of calculations, but I've provided you all counselors with a handout of the specific charts that I'm referencing, so you can see them. So on page nine, the top chart there, page nine of the report, there is a calculation made of the minimum number of posts or officer assignments needed to cover the expected workload of each shift. And that's based on the average call volume, which is the premise of the report. That number is then adjusted, or in other words, it's rounded up or down, so that in the last column there, it's a whole number. These adjusted numbers, not the actual numbers produced by the calculations, are then used on page eleven, that's the second chart it gave you, to determine the total number of officers who should be hired. Now, given that in high school math, we get taught that you should not round until the end of your calculations. Otherwise, you could be introducing inaccuracies into your calculations. We need to ask ourselves why the study adjusted, uh, used the adjusted numbers on page eleven instead of the exact numbers. The report doesn't give that explanation. It doesn't say why it's used those numbers. And so I've tried to think about if it is necessary to use those adjusted numbers. And I've come to the conclusion that it wasn't. But I'm just a layperson here. I do encourage you to ask um, the, the people who conducted the report, ask the professionals about this. I don't have time to explain all of the reasons that I think it's not only okay to use the exact numbers, but better to use the actual numbers um, instead of the adjusted numbers, so I can follow up by email about that. But for just now, for now, I'll just say there is not a one-to-one correlation between officers hired and posts to fill, post being um per shift, post on a shift, because the number of posts that must be filled is based on the availability factor, which is one point seven eight. That reflects how to take into consideration things like vacation days and sick days and all of those other factors um, that can make an officer unable to work a given shift. So since that factor is one point seven eight, the number of police officers in the chart on page eleven also needs to be adjusted or rounded in that final column in order to give you a concrete number of people to hire. You can't hire half an officer, right? So you need that final number. So, since you have to round on page eleven anyway, if you use the exact numbers from page nine instead of the adjusted numbers, it's better because then you're not rounding twice. You can be not inflating or deflating because the number on page nine rounds up and rounds down. Okay, um, so anyway, like I said, I'd be happy to explain further why I believe the exact and not the adjusted numbers can be used in the calculation on page eleven. But in the interest of time, I'd like to just show you what happens if we do use those actual numbers. That's the bottom chart on your page. So as you can see, it changes the numbers significantly when compared to the report. In the report's chart on page eleven, when the numbers are adjusted, they're all rounded up. Now, none of them are rounded down. Even um the afternoon shift, which is technically seven point one two officers, that becomes eight. It always rounds up on page eleven. So if we follow that pattern and round all of the numbers in my chart up, as I did for you, you'll see that this calculation, using the actual and not the rounded numbers for posts, says that the number of officers needed is nineteen, not twenty like the report says. Now, I also do think that we could make a case for rounding both up and down here on that chart on page eleven, because they do that on the chart on page nine. So there's precedent set within this report for rounding down. I believe that's because, as the report states, uniformed officers are also supported by sergeants, lieutenants, and even the chief if there is need to patrol, um, that exceeds the number of officers on a shift. So if you were to round down here, the morning shifts, real need of five point two officers could be rounded down to five with the knowledge that some other employees might help on particularly busy shifts. And then the actual number of uniformed officers in the department would be eighteen. So again, sorry to be so number-focused, um, but I did want to show you how something as small as rounding those numbers of posts can change it by recommendation by two officers. The city should investigate how these calculations were made and not just take them at face value. I think.
Next we have Penny Hankins.
Hello, I'm following up on the public comment that I gave way back in May of twenty twenty-one. Uh, it was during mental health awareness month. Uh, according to the administrative study on the Geneva Police Department, it seems we need to replace a few police officers with mental health workers, as many as is needed to handle the flow of mental health calls and OD calls. This is something I called for, like I said, during the month of May of twenty twenty-one, and nothing was ever done about it. Uh, the administrative study report states, GPD officials attribute some of this increase in non-criminal related service calls to the increase in domestic mental health and drug overdose-related calls. So you can hear right there that the GPD is seeing that the calls of this nature are increasing. I renew my request for, for Geneva to create their own mental health crisis team like the one in Rochester, which is called the Person in Crisis Team, PIC. The PIC team of Rochester sees, as the PIC team of Rochester sees it, they're filling in a gap when it comes to emergency calls. They're called in to help when a uniformed officer might inadvertently escalate a mental health or substance abuse situation. The PIC team is unassuming and does not carry the authority figure air that police do. And this is essential when dealing with those experiencing a mental health crisis or a substance abuse crisis. We need this same thing here in Geneva. You can be the nicest officer around with the best communication skills, but it's what that uniform represents to that individual that can really set them off. Or, and as do the police sirens also. In addition, police officers do not have the appropriate advanced training to deal with mental health or substance abuse calls. You need a seasoned mental health team of licensed professionals to get the job done correctly. Please consider my request fully. Thank you.
Next we have Amaris Elliott Engel.
Props to you, Mayor, for saying my name correctly. Appreciate that. I answer to Ameris and Amoris and all sorts of things, so thank you. Um, so I'm the local attorney, a former member of the police review board. Um, I'm here to comment on the staffing analysis that was done by the Division of Criminal Justice Services. Uh, my main question in evaluating the recommended staffing is why professional staff are not um being incorporated or evaluated um, professional staff to help with mental health crises and substance abuse uh overdoses and substance abuse crises. Um, we ask police to basically be the jack-of-all-trades for all the problems of society, and that's not fair to them because there's a lot of different skills that you need to have to deal with different kinds of problems that emerge on police calls. And that's especially not fair to the officers because of the staffing shortages that they're facing. Um, there's just in all aspects of society, there's struggles to hire people right now. So I request that the ultimate number of officers include specialized non-officer staff who have this specialization, who have the expertise to deal with mental health and behavioral health crises. This is something that we're asking these officers to respond to rather than folks who actually have the requisite knowledge of how to handle those situations. And I would also mention that the um, the police budget advisory board did recommend exploring having mental health staff um added to the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Scott Bowes. I'll try to remember that.
Ah, you're okay. Thank you. Uh, my name is Scott Bowes, and uh, I recently ran for Ward Six representative. I want to thank all those that honored me with their vote and agreed with what I was standing for in my campaign. I would also like to congratulate Kyle on winning his seat. Congratulations. I would like to talk about the GPD and what has been reported about with uh excessive consumption of police services by Geneva residents. We have a report that states upwards of almost fifty-five percent of calls have been for property checks. This is an issue that's not relegated to just Geneva, but is a common problem across the United States. Here in New York State, I came across the uh Camillus Police Department, which has a form on the website for their police department that can be filled out when a resident is going out of town or away from their business. Um, that would allow the Camillus Police Department to do checks, but also have an answer when fielding calls from concerned neighbors when they see a light on or nobody's home. Uh, that way you're not always sending up a police officer out to a call. You can just tell that resident, well, this is what's going on. Um, I don't know if Geneva has anything available like this. I visited the website for the uh police department, the, the small website we have. Um, I didn't see anything on there. The Camillus website has a, a very large amount of forms and they have one available if you want to take a look at that and see what they use. With the high percentage of calls that the GPD has, how many of those are repeat offenders as well? Uh, you know, people just wanting to call and call and call is, happens with small towns. Uh, people don't have, have too much time on their hands. Uh, can we implement maybe a small fine or something like that towards those offenders in order to keep police officers from wasting their time and uh, taking them away from other more important calls? Um, lastly, and I, this is just a little bit of conjecture, but um, are there a group of uh Geneva citizens that see the GPD as their personal security force that must keep an eye on their business or property while they're out of town on vacation? If that's the case, uh, they do need to be called out to the carpet and rebuked for wasting our police department's services for their private needs. Uh, I think they can hire a service instead of wasting the limited funds that we have at the Geneva Police Department for themselves. If I have a quick, little bit more time, um, I met a senior six, uh, I'm sorry, it's Ward Six representative, the who's a little bit in a senior age, and we were talking about downtown with the new curbs, the extended curbs that have come out into the lanes. He felt they were a hazard because as he drives, he can't see them clearly. Uh, because they are farther out, can't see him over the front fender of his car. Is there a possibility maybe putting some brightly colored bollards posts that are in view over the high front of cars? Some cars are lower, some cars are higher, and help out seniors who have a hard time with the difference in curves. Uh, thank you for listening. I hope you can take what I say into your consideration.
Next on the agenda is the city manager report.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So I will begin with some updates on the Marsh Creek Pump Station. Uh, our project is moving forward quite a bit with the marsh, that part of the pump station. Um, and we actually hit a new level of completion today, so that was really positive news. There's now a connection between the new and old cells, so that project is moving right along schedule, uh, which is great news. Uh, on kind of that system, we are moving forward with our water infrastructure improvement and intermunicipal grant program funding. So that was the announcement um around the two million dollars, which is just a piece of that total ATAD development. What we're looking at now is all of, all of the paperwork's and forms that are part of that program as we start to look at engineering and what we'll need to do. Likely, we'll have to put out an RFQ um to move that project forward. Uh, as far as some other things that have happened, um, I met today with the LDC. They met uh, and the comptroller joined me as we discussed the revolving loan fund. The revolving loan fund does still exist. Um, information is on our website regarding that. Uh, the group has not been meeting as regularly, but they are coming back. And they report to the LDC, so the LDC voted to reappoint Jim King, Jim Fedora, and Greg Woodworth uh, for two-year terms, and they also appointed two new members, um, Jeffrey Kowalski and Joshua Burden. So they'll be on for three-year terms, so they're staggered terms there, um, and that body is coming back together. So uh, we look forward to that. The LDC and IDA both are reviewing a proposal from the Business Improvement District, talking about beautification, so increasing the efforts of the bid. As part of your budget process, we increased our funding to the bid, so we previously had hired two FTEs, so full-time employees that work at the bid, we increased to include not just those two and two seasonal part-time, but actually four seasonal, that was the increase. We had traditionally done two seasonal. We now have four seasonal that are city-funded. Um, this effort that the bid has reached out to the LDC, who also reached out to the IDA, um, will allow the Business Improvement District to increase by an additional two seasonal employees. So there'll be six seasonal employees um at the bid, well, two full-time, four seasonal. Um, that will be able to help um with the beautification efforts. That is also in addition to the work that our DPW crews will do. So as we take ownership of all of those new plantings, uh, we'll have quite a team for the next year. Other things in the bid proposal include things like plant signage, so people understand what the plants are. Some of our plants may look like weeds, but they may not be. Some may be weeds and people can be encouraged to pick those. Um, as well as some things like volunteer recognition events, um, as well as tools and other items. The other piece too, when we talk beautification, uh, we focus a lot on the seasonal when there's plantings there. Uh, but the bid also supports the snow season. Um, and as we talk about those bump outs and other things, those are all new things that we're going to learn about as we get snow the first time, I'm sure. Uh, one other thing, LDC IDA focused is economic development. We had done a search for a director of planning and economic development. We have paused that search. We're gonna bring, I'm going to bring back uh, the team members that participated. We had members from the community participate on that search, as well as city hall staff that would be working with this person to really identify what we're looking for. Um, and we, I spoke a little bit about this today, as well as how that fits into city hall and what we have available in the city. So there's some limitations around that uh, and what economic development and planning both look like here and how we build that team. Uh, we also received notification uh that we will receive a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the micro enterprise assistance program, so the MAP program, to help some businesses locally, uh, start up or expand. So that will be going through the LDC uh, and the city, so we'll be working on that together. Uh, and I think the final two things. Uh, this weekend, I appreciate everyone's patience as ice rink was not at full scale, um, due to some some things being down. We have received, will be picking up the parts to repair what was broken. Um, it will be fixed for this weekend, um, and we'll continue to look at not just repair, but replacement of some equipment that needs to happen uh, to keep that rink going. So thank you to everyone in the community for their patience. I know it's hard when something you really are counting on is down. And then the final piece I have is just a thank you to the city staff team and all of those who helped with the mayor's tree lighting and the events uh on Friday evening, helped our community stay safe throughout those events um, and really came together. It was a nice holiday. The staff has spent some time decorating and redecorating and bringing in lots of trees and lights, but they really came together to make it look really nice. So thank you for that to all of our team.
Thank you for the update. The, the micro enterprise, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, does it also um available for retention of a business?
Um, I don't know the details of the program because I looked at two different programs recently, so I can't tell you. I do know that in our grant application, um, I believe we're looking at, it, it's a small number of employees being retained, so.
Five or less, right? But if, how about a, a business that was about to go out of business and it's five or less?
I don't know.
Okay, second, well then, second part of that is under, under the uh, the LDC and the revolving loan fund. Can, is, does do, does it? the LDC and the revolving loan fund can, is, does do, does it make micro loans to a business that's having cash flow problems? Will it do that?
Um, so there's, there's some strings attached to the micro loan fund. Um, and so it depends, would be my answer. So it, it does have, if, if you were losing staff, so you weren't able to retain staff, there's a potential there, but it also has additional strings along with it. All of that information is on our website. It's under the economic development page. It is not the easiest to find, so if people have questions about the revolving loan fund, they can always reach out to myself or to the comptroller.
I, I will, because somebody's, and, and it's not about staff, it's about their suppliers are really crunching them on cash flow.
So it has to be about retaining or attracting employees.
They might close on that basis, so okay.
Yep, so it might be.
Thank you very much. Move beyond unfinished business. Our first is a resolution scheduling a public hearing in connection with an application to the New York State Office of Empire State Development for round seven of Restore New York Communities Initiative Funding presented by our city manager.
Yes, so this came forward last month. We sent forward a letter to, of intent to the state um, regarding this expansion. You approved that resolution saying that we would be able to submit an application for round seven funding. This is for the Pretzel Logic Project um, to move to a larger space at eighty-eight Middle Street and hire an additional amount of employees. What this resolution does is provides a public hearing at the next meeting, so we will look and review that um, that application. Uh, the members of the public can speak out about that application at that time. This only schedules the public hearing. It does not give approval to submit that application.
Need a motion?
Counselor Galanese, second by Counselor Burl. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution extending the city manager's time to establish residence presented by our city manager.
That one's a little odd. So um, on this one, as I was appointed on June second with a stipulation to move within the city within six months, I there is, I, I need to establish a longer timeframe just due to the entire moving process and purchasing a home. I will say that we are close. The paperwork is actually being drawn up as we speak. I'm just waiting on a couple of final documents so I can have a closing date. Um, and as my attorney knows, I ask pretty much month, well, weekly when that closing date will be.
Motion, Counselor Camera, second by Counselor Galanese, comments?
Good luck.
Not, not for lack of effort, I can tell you that, Counselor Peeler.
Yeah, just what is the uh, what is the uh, extension? Is it ninety days? Is it?
I believe it's ninety days.
Yeah, so everyone, okay.
Uh, it's March thirty-first.
Of twenty twenty-three?
Ninety days, yeah.
Roughly, yeah.
Yep, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is a resolution authorizing permission to enter upon city property for cleaning, removing trees, brush and like activities on the Greenway Trail presented by our city manager.
Sure, so the town and the city of Geneva, along with Blueprint Geneva, um, have proposed a project for the Greenway Trail that continues to be on the city property known as the former Lehigh Valley Railroad right-of-way. Part of this was in um, the BOA connectivity strategy, so there were some uh, designs and schematics as part of that. That's kind of the entrance to the trail. This group has said that they would like to go ahead and follow some of that. They have actually obtained some funding to implement beginning pieces of that trail. They would need permission to enter upon city property to continue this effort. Um, similar, we did something, I think, two or maybe three months ago um, for Marsh Creek cleanup, and so it just allows them to continue to do these efforts in coordination with the city. So it's not like they will be doing something that's not part of our plans already.
Need a motion? Counselor Galanese, second by Counselor Brim, discussion. Just a quick question, when we do this, um, liabilities, uh, release forms, anything like that, is that all?
Yeah, so we have done some release forms. We've done similar with this project already and we'll continue with that.
Thank you.
So, so this is all under the supervision of the DPW?
Yes.
Cause I had the same question of wondering why this was necessary, and so it's kind of linked toward the volunteer signer release form, so it's.
Yes, it's all within that and it's all, if we were to do anything large, if we needed engineering or any of that, the city would do that to ensure that it matches our standard.
Alright, so everything that they're doing is, has been approved by?
Yes.
Okay, staff, thank you.
Great, we appreciate their efforts. Counselor Peeler?
I just wanna confirm, cause I see it on this document, uh, but it's not technically on the resolution. There is going to be zero financial impact for this?
There is no financial impact at this time outside of staffing resources, which is much more, uh, much less than it would be if we were doing this project on our own.
Very good, thank you.
I just wanna, I just wanna thank the volunteers.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter three thirty-five entitled Vehicles and Traffic of Geneva Municipal Code, and it doesn't say who's presenting this, so.
I guess it's me. So this is actually um, codifying what we discussed at the September seventh meeting about winter parking. Uh, you have operated a pilot program since twenty eighteen, however, the ordinance has never been updated to modify that. So this takes into account what the pilot program looks like and puts it into ordinance language. One thing that I just wanna bring your attention to, this is the first reading, so there will be some modifications potentially between this reading and the second. One change that we would ask you to think about for the next one is this, this would um, be reflected in code three thirty-five point two seven C, um, which really says that we cannot charge more than ninety dollars to tow a vehicle in that ordinance. So there was a number put in that ordinance back in nineteen ninety-one. Um, if we were to tow a vehicle, the charge fee for towing a vehicle is no longer ninety dollars, it's slightly greater than that. So what I would be recommending next month is additional ordinance change that's now part of this to say the cost of towing versus putting an amount that is established in a time period, but yet the ordinance lives beyond that timeframe. Um, everything else that we've in, inserted into this, we followed other municipal programs, our team between DPW, the police department, the comptroller, code, um, and a couple of other staff. I know the clerk as well as legal have reviewed this to make sure it just aligns with what the pilot is doing. It makes no changes to the pilot.
Need a motion? Counselor Galanese, second by Counselor Regan. Counselor Galanese has a comment?
So, one of the things that's very discouraging to me, and I know that you're new on the job and everything, but here we are in December, and I know that the ordinance doesn't start till December first, but we have gotten in snow in October. And there has, there is nothing on our city website. I've gotten many calls and many emails of people asking what are the guidelines to our, our ordinance? And I just think that we need to be more proactive, and now we, we've heard the excuse over the last three years of communication, communication, website changes, all this stuff. I just think that we need to get on our game. Like this should already be on there. We should have already agreed to these changes by now. Because it's the seventh, this goes into fact on the first, and you know, we're chasing our tail now. So I just wanted to use this as an example that we could be a little more proactive going down the road for seasonal changes. And just to be clear, there is nothing different from the pilot program that was voted on, it was before us, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. No, what this does is just codify the pilot. So previously, it was previous to the pilot, there was odd and even and no parking in certain areas. Um, what this does is defines a weather event. Um, lets you know that if a weather event is declared, it, where it will be posted, so people can see that. Um, gets that out a lot more in alternative notification systems, and then people understand that it's only during a wedding, weather event um, that between December and the end of March, during a weather event, that's when parking enforcement would be in effect and between those hours. Um, so it follows that pilot to a T.
Real, real quick, so you came to us, not you, you, with staff recommendations or changing this. And I just wanna be very clear and, and put out there my stand on it, that I am a hundred percent behind this for the simple fact that parking is scarce on a lot of side streets. And this right here, I believe is for the people, not for the staff, and that's a good thing.
And Counselor Camera, then Counselor Regan?
Well, I appreciate what you're sa, I appreciate what you're saying because we had the discussion, you know, and we discussed it and the staff recommendation was to change it and go back to the old rule. We decided as council, we didn't feel good about that, but the one, one, the one thing was the communication component that we felt the staff would be better off and all of us would be better off if the communication uh, component of this program was really ramped up. And we found a way to talk, you know, to get the, the word out to all the people affected. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm piling on for communication and whatever way we can do that. Counselor Regan?
Um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm also very much in favor of this. Um, but I, I do have, not to be nitpicking, but questions about section thirty, or three hundred thirty-five sixteen subdivision C, which has been amended to read, I mean, I read this and I, there are so many little components that I don't get, like it says, no vehicle shall be parked on any other street in the city of Geneva. I don't know what other street means there. It doesn't mean any street or any.
So that has not been changed. That's actually the original code. Um, and so what this is, is that's the original code. Obviously, we can change the original code, cause that's what we're doing. Um, that, that, when you look at the, the entire code, there is a listing of all the streets and it tells you how you park on that street. So this is a section that goes below all of that. Um, which is not anything that we're changing. We're keeping all of those parkings on those streets. So if you only park on one side, all those things.
Well, that, that's a good clarification, because my other question is um, whether, I didn't think this was true, but can you park um, between the hours of two AM and six AM on certain streets in Geneva?
Not during a weather event.
But, but otherwise.
Otherwise.
Yeah, because the way this reads, yeah, it reads, yeah, it reads as, oh, you, um, yeah, that you can't park, whatever, but if, if this is, now you're, you're clarifying it. The only other thing I would say is um, to, to specify these months, um, couldn't you just say something like, um, uh, you know, no, uh, you could just say during a weather event as pronounced and publicized by the city. I mean, cause you're leaving um, so many months, April, we've had snow in April. I mean, we, you know, I mean, that's just a suggestion from the English major in me.
Uh, I appreciate the English major as we were trying to figure this out. So this is again, the original code.
Right.
Um, which we didn't modify, and I will say we went back and forth to make sure that it, it, it really fouled what it is. I mean, could we change that piece and say, expand it, but right now you're saying between December and April, April first.
Right.
Is the only time that we don't allow parking. Now, if you wanted to change that to say if there was a weather event in April or a weather event in October, that would be different.
It's really just a suggestion, cause I think weather events can happen um, almost any time, really, you know, could even be a flood, that, you know, whatever, but, alright, thank you. That, that clarifies my questions.
Counselor Burl?
Um, I'm, just wanna clarify that the agenda item briefing refer, refers to the winter parking pilot program? And changing the ordinance, um, we have eliminated pilot. So I just wanna make sure that we are ending a five-year pilot because this actually started five years ago. So I'm happy to hear that next year we don't have to have this conversation because it's getting really old and the arguments have not changed. Um, the other thing I wanna make sure of, which I'll have to verify tomorrow morning on my way to work, is that I'm not sure that the signs on Main Street have actually been removed because once this goes through, it will conflict with our signs.
Yes.
And it's been, actually been conflicting for the last five years and uh, multiple complaints on this, especially if you're not familiar with um, opting into the notification, since that seems to be a, a word today. So, anyway, this is fantastic. Um, I guess I'm gonna have to go into it and as far as the second reading, as far as what you refer to as the towing. And Jan actually brings up a pretty good point about the month of April. Even though generally the snow melts pretty quickly in Geneva with a weather event in April, and I would add the same thing for November. Um, climate change is for real and it's affecting both of those months.
Um, and just so you are aware, the signage has been a discussion and how do you utilize the signage because, or not utilize the signage. So this is a piece, the, one of the key components to this is by no longer being a pilot and changing the ordinance, enforcement can also be, it, it, it strengthens enforcement, and I think that's something you heard from staff that was a frustration is we were not able to enforce the pilot, or as we were, it wasn't being enforced at all levels.
So my thanks to staff for listening and putting the effort into coming up with a solution, because there was a lot of input, not just from council, but from residences. And uh, it, it was definitely a major challenge. And the uh, fact that, that we're making this an ordinance, um, it allows the court system to be able to leverage the penalties there also, which they couldn't do before, so I'm very appreciative. One last question, so the signs are gonna stay up until the second reading and we vote? Or are they gonna come down?
I, uh, so the signs, depending on the signs, there's two parts to this, but I like that Stephanie is laughing because she sat through these conversations about what can be added. So a lot of the signage will actually just get a small sign on top, and I can't remember the final word, wording, which will say during a weather event, please observe the following.
Okay.
And then underneath, and the reason we're doing that is because, and then probably pointing somewhere so they know what a weather event is, but the reason we're doing that is because if people don't show up, they're not going to, when they show up in the city, you don't always know the city policies. And if it's a weather event, they may not know that. So we're gonna, we're gonna modify those signs.
My, my question is still, when?
I'm not sure, probably within the next few weeks.
Okay, close enough. Thank you. It sounds like you're finding another form of communication.
Maybe.
Okay, um, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, next is new business, resolution authorizing the city comptroller to collect tax liens presented by our city comptroller.
I figured I'd give Amy a little bit of a break. Um, so this is done each year. Um, fees are assessed on various city services and um, those that remain unpaid at the end of our fiscal year get re-lebied onto um, the city and county taxes, so this is giving me permission to basically be able to re- levy those um, at this time.
Need a motion? Counselor Galanese, second by Counselor Camera, any discussion?
I just have a quick question on this. Um, the reason that we have to vote on this every year is that it's based on the debt schedule? Because who else would be authorized to collect bad debt? And, and why isn't this just a permanent thing? Why does it come up for vote every year? It's, it's collecting bad debt.
Great question.
So isn't that your job to collect bad debt?
Yes.
So, so why, so why is this, why is this actually um, new business every single year when that's your job?
Right, my, my understanding, my very brief understanding is because I'm taking a fine that was for, that I already have permission, or that like the fire department already has permission to assess, and I'm adding it on to a tax bill is why essentially you have to vote on it.
Okay, so, so because this is actually public record?
Yes.
It's not actually for back taxes, which are published in our approved publication.
This is.
This is why we have to do this every single year.
That's my very limited understanding. Yes.
I would, I would guess that it's in municipal finance and it's, it's part of it because it is, it's shifting from one account. Yeah.
Okay, I guess it's beyond my pay scale, but I'm good with it.
It's because it's fire code in DPW or DPW charges, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamendra?
Counselor Salamandra? Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, next is appointments to boards and commissions, and we have added a resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-two. Resolution amending bylaws of the police budget advisory board and reinstating James McCorkle and Robert McLean. Whereas on July first, twenty twenty, Geneva City Council created a police budget advisory board and on October seventh, twenty twenty, adopted bylaws for, for, for the board, which authorized five positions to serve for two years. And whereas the Geneva City Council appointed James McCorkle and Robert McLean to serve on the police budget advisory board for terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas on June first, twenty twenty-two, Geneva City Council removed James McCorkle and Robert McLean from the police budget advisory board after statements that McCorkle and McLean made in their personal capacities concerning the police department and their political views. Whereas James McCorkle and Robert McLean alleged their removal from the police budget advisory board violated their rights to free speech and due process under the United States and New York constitutions. Whereas a proposed settlement agreement to be entered into by James McCorkle and Robert McLean and the city and the city council has been presented to the city council for its consideration. Whereas the city attorney has recommended that James McCorkle and Robert McLean be reinstated to a police budget advisory board. Now therefore be it resolved that the bylaws of the city of Geneva Police Budget Advisory Board are hereby amended to temporarily expand the number of positions on the board to seven by creating two temporary positions. And it is further resolved that James McCorkle and Robert McLean be reinstated to the budget, police budget advisory board for a term commencing with the date of this resolution is passed and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And is further resolved that the number of positions on the police budget advisory board should revert to five upon James McCorkle and Robert McLean completing the term of their reinstatement. And it further resolves the reinstatement of James McCorkle and Robert McLean shall take effect upon the execution of a settlement agreement by James McCorkle, Robert McLean releasing and remissing and forever discharging the city and members of the city council from the claims arising out of their June first, twenty twenty-two removal from the police budget advisory board. And is further resolved that the settlement agreement between the city of Geneva and James McCorkle and Robert McLean, which is attached here too and made part of here, is hereby approved. And the mayor and the city manager are hereby authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and the Geneva City Council. And I so move, and we need a second. Second by Counselor Regan. Discussion, Counselor Camera?
Okay, um, I have a statement to read. And since, I mean, even if I support this, um, I am not comfortable with this resolution for previous. One glosses over an important event and teaching moment for the city council and the Geneva public at large. It does not completely or accurately reflect the actions by the city council at the June meeting.
Where they were, where McCorkle and uh, McLean were removed. What it mostly does is provide a way for the city council to save face in the front of the public and misrepresent the historical record. What actually happened was the mayor initiated the public removal of two members of the PAB, PBAB, the Police Budget Advisory Board this past June, twenty twenty-two, by offering a resolution that was not on the agenda. Then he proceeded with a vote that passed by a five to four margin that secured their removal and violated their individual civil rights under the US and the New York state constitutions. This was a breach of city council protocol and as well, as well as the civil rights of the parties. A complaint uh, ensued by McCorkle and McLean. The case for reinstatement of the board members is sound. City council violated these individuals Article One, Section Eight of the New York State Constitution and First Amendment Constitution rights. Which essentially protects their opinions and without fear from retaliation. The complaint also noted that the mayor and the city council in violating procedure also raised the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Rather than relegate this matter to a pedestrian and dishonest resolution and then sanctify it by a vote, I believe we should face the consequences and embrace the opportunity to learn something from past events and city council actions since the murder of George Floyd, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. This was an important event in recent history. And unfortunately, it split the community in half. As a counselor, I would like us to get back at least to square one. How did we get here? I think that it's safe to say our divisions started a long time ago, but came to a head with the protests in Geneva. When they were catalyzed by the murder of George Floyd and then led by a large number of young people who protested and, and embodied under the name People's Peaceful Protest. The protests in the streets in Geneva lasted several weeks and then gravitated to some members of the PPP working with some counselors and with other members of the community to craft legislation that would foster more police accountability. This resulted in the formation of the PAB and the PBAB. We had plenty of our own police problems in Geneva, even if no one had recently died. Going back several years, here's some of the ones I know about. It was not uncommon to hear complaints and rumors about misconduct. The complaint process seemed to have broken down and was losing the public trust. Some officer recruits had failed during training periods, wasting city resources and time. And that was resulting from their own domestic abuse complaints and deficient fitness reports. GPD leadership, some counselors and others participated in public debate and culture warfare by gaslighting members of the public and city council as supporters of police who were for defunding rather than having valid concerns about the complaint process and the need for accountability. And then finally, direct intimidation of a city counselor through a screensaver image and careless social media posts and some stalking activity. Many of these issues are matters of public concern and were legitimate areas of city council oversight. As a matter of conscience, I propose a res- a resolution that suggests the city council agree to the following items. One, admission of a mistaken resolution that violated city council procedure and the constitutional rights of a couple of community members. Two, revision of the term structure to event, to affect the rest, restate reinstatement of the members. Three, reaffirmation that the US and the New York state constitutions protect the rights of all Genevans to express their viewpoints without fear of retaliation. Four, the city is committed to upholding these rights for all its citizens. And finally, release of the city from further actions by the plaintiffs. Um, by the way, you know, we take an oath of office and I, I hope I don't have to remind us that we have, we've, we formally swear to uphold the constitution of the United States and the constitution of New York state. We have not been doing a very good job when under our own noses, and that includes me too. Our troubled police department has not stepped up and defended all the people in this community in the last several years. I mean all. So it's time for the city council itself to be accountable and reaffirm its commitment to the constitution by publicly accepting the settlement as originally proposed by the plaintiffs. If members of the city council choose not to, then it's for them to do so publicly, by their voice vote. Not behind the veil of client attorney confidentiality. And finally, may I say, our first responsibility as city councillor, counselors are to the people of the city of Geneva. Not to any one individual or office or department of the city. Our duty is to make residents happier and richer and safer by providing efficient and humane government services. And uh, that's my statement. Um, I'm still struggling with whether I want to vote for this resolution or not to end it. To end this, this sad chapter in our history, but I, I feel that the public needs to know the whole story. This resolution doesn't say that.
Anybody else? Counselor Peeler?
I'm just going to read briefly from our charter. And there, the, the reason why a lot of this is alleged and conjecture is because the premise is that something happened after someone made public statements. And that is conjecture because the, what happened after was actually a reorganization politically of the city council. And the politics of the council changed. And these are political appointments. And logic would conclude on a political adjustment of a council, there are political ramifications that goes along with it. This happens in every stage of government from local all the way up to federal. And political appointments have political consequences when the politics of those appointed do not align with the, with the new majority. And th- this happened before any of these boards were uh, formed. I mean, the politics to enact all these things were very divided. They were always narrow. And the rhetoric associated on both sides was pretty savage. So it's, it's not like this, this is highly political, okay? So I'm going to read from our charter. And this is what it says. The appointing, and this is article two point nine of our charter. The appointing authority shall have the power to remove any officer or employee appointed by him or her at any time. Except as otherwise provided by law or this charter or in accordance with provisions of law applicable thereto. In those cases where the appointing authority is city council, a board agency or commission, the city council, board agency or commission, shall have the power to remove any of the appointed officers or employees by a majority vote of its full membership and in accordance with the provisions of law. And that's what happened. Okay, so opinion of the interpretation of the constitution or the coincidence or circumstance that's presented on a timeline of why things are happening and cause and effect. It's all alleged, but what really happened is the political balance of the council changed. And that's the game. We are politicians and we of course logically appoint people that are politically aligned with our goals. And that actually creates a very productive boards and commissions. Because you don't have to question the alignment of the ideology of the people you appoint and they align with the majority of council. This is not bizarre. This is criminally uncontroversial. This is normal operating procedure in all stages of government. So I just want to bring that to the public's attention and that's objectively what's, what's going on here as far as the council's authority to remove any board member that we appointed. Thank you.
Counselor Regan and Counselor Salamandra?
Well, I, my feeling is the dismissal of these two committee members was a a disservice to them and to the city and to the individual rights. And especially, well, as, as equally to the whole concept of what an advisory committee is supposed to do. So I'm, I'm pleased to um, support the reinstatement. I, I can't um, argue with Counselor Camera that there are still some things lacking. Um, but that is, that was, I, I'm glad to see that end result. Um, uh, although, so Counselor Peeler has expressed the political um, reasoning behind this. Um, the, the resolution itself seems to indicate that it was a reaction to um, public comments made and my recollection of the discussion uh, was a lot surrounded that. But I think another impetus for dismissing these two just seems to be basically how unquestionable, how unthinkable it is just to simply question the actions of our police force. Um, I find that just remarkable. In this particular case, we're talking about two individuals who are serving in an advisory capacity. They had no power to implement any direct change. They were simply charged with making suggestions and pointing out what is it, pointing out concerns in what is the most costly segment of our city budget. Um, for members of this council and the whole of the budget, uh, with the whole of the budget document to explore. I personally found their review to be extremely helpful. They took the time to look at a detail that's difficult for, for us when we have the whole document in front of us. Um, and then finally, I just want to say, if you have a board that all agree with each other, which seems to be somewhat the goal here. Um, the changes, the chances for a critical analysis, critical as in the definition expressing or involving an analysis of merits and faults. Not in criticizing or, or, or making um, remarks that are insulting to someone, but thinking analytically. Um, those chances kind of fade away when everybody just agrees. A committee that does not look critically at the thing they're analyzing can hardly be called an advisory committee. They end up sometimes being more like a cheerleading squad. We had the benefit of review by this committee when both James McCorkle and Robert McLean were members. I recall their valuable contributions to our decision-making that year. I support their reinstatement and I thank them for their patience and their willingness to serve. And um, I wish the entire committee good luck in their, in their valuable work.
Counselor Salamandra?
Um, just a few notes on what others have said. Um, I agree with Counselor Camera. I know that some on this council won't say it, but the fifth ward counselor um, agrees that the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and the New York State Constitution protects the rights of all Genevans to express their viewpoints without fear of retaliation or suppression. These protections extend to speech that is critical of the government and law enforcement. And I agree that the city of Geneva, some of us are committed to upholding these rights for its citizens. Um, and in disagreement of what Counselor Peeler said, he says that the political will has changed, but it hasn't changed back. And here we are reinstating them. Anyway. In June, this council voted to punish two volunteers kicking them off a board they were serving on with professionalism and good faith. Because the chief of police didn't like something one of them said in the newspaper. That was wrong. And tonight we have a chance to right that wrong. But we don't even have the courage to say that Dr. McCorkle and Dr. McLean's First Amendment rights were violated by this body. We don't even have the courage to say that we made a mistake. And we don't have the courage to right the real wrong that is at the heart of the issue. We have a police department that believes it is above criticism and counselors that believe any criticism of the police should be forbidden. What happens when a police department, when a city council and when a community is unable to hear criticism? When we are unable to hear any new ideas or consider, consider any creative solutions? When we are stuck twenty years in the past? This is sad and embarrassing episode in the city's history communicates one thing very clearly to the larger Geneva community. If you voice your discontent, you will be targeted. It took Doctors McCorkle and McLean seeking out legal counsel and six months' time to advocate for their constitutional right to criticize the police in their capacity as private citizens. I apologize on behalf of this council that you were treated with such disrespect. It is a sign that our city is very sick. And that our police department and mayor were, were willing to go to such lengths to silence hardworking volunteers. That's why this conversation cannot end tonight when we pass this resolution. We have to address the unhealthy power dynamic that has allowed this to happen. We have to be honest about who is really running things. And we have to work to restore power in the city where it belongs, not with the police, but with the people.
Brother Collins? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Counselor Galanese?
No.
Counselor Burrow?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Nay.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is council reports. I'm going to start at my right with Counselor Burrow.
Uh, we skipped over on an agenda item for an appointment.
Is there, is there an appointment?
Yeah, there is for the Board of Assessment Review. It, and then I also want to bring up two that was mentioned in the city manager report that I, I think also falls under this, is that she mentioned three names that were appointed to the IDA.
They were done by the LDC.
Or the L-
The LDC runs that.
That, that does not come to us.
Correct.
No, it's the RLF and it goes to the LDC. So it's already been appointed.
Okay, I'm good. Thanks.
So Counselor Galanese?
I can I ask a question to the city manager real quick?
Can I ask a question to the City Manager real quick?
Sure.
I've been holding on to. Um, I don't know if we brought this up in the past or if in your reports. But what is going on? I know the IDA is the one that was in charge of the negotiations, but the property on the corner of North Street and Exchange, what's the status with? I know that it went in front of the planning board. Dunkin' Donuts was
Yes.
gonna take the property and then-
So it's an environmental review that's with the D E C right now. Um, there are still negotiations on that piece, but we're waiting for the D E C sign off before that can go through.
Did you do my impact study on the grounds?
Yes.
Okay, and then appointments, right?
Yep, please.
So the Board of Assessment Review wishes to reappoint Dana Hollenbeck. I'd like to make a motion to-
Second by Counsel Camera. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
She's just-
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Um, one more. Uh, the planning board wishes to reappoint Charles King. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Charles King.
Second by Counsel Brim. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Galanese?
Aye.
Counselor Burl?
Aye.
Counselor Peeler?
Aye.
Counselor Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Camera?
Aye.
Counselor Salamandra?
Aye.
Counselor Brim?
Aye.
Mayor Valentino?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Anything else? Okay, back to you, Counsel Burl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to give a shout out and thank Erica Collins um, who distributed a request through the American Red Cross that uh in this time of giving that it's a wonderful year to think about uh giving blood. Um, everyone here uh knows how I feel about that. But I wanted to um in 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 and they wanted to announce that there's a blood drive at the Hydrant Hose on Wednesday, December 28th between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Um, December in the holiday season is a high need uh time for blood donations, as are the summer months. So I wanted um again, have that shout out to Erica to thank you, to thank Erica, but also ask Erica that she send the same statement as part on our constant contact list that the city has, or at least in a city manager's report, which is actually just as important as paying your school taxes on time. So that's how passionate I am about this to our entire database. But this is really not just a holiday tradition in that even though I bring this up every month for the last uh three years, but this is something that I think is of of such critical importance to um to human beings that it actually be done on a monthly basis. So I can actually think of few giving opportunities more worthwhile, as I've mentioned, than donating blood. So this city, I encourage um Eric and the city to make this announcement a monthly habit as I do, because I have proof that it works. So continuing on that vein, um, if you can't make the Hydrant Hose, which is quite convenient, uh, Wednesday, December 14th between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM at Cornell Agritech, Jordan Hall, uh, Wednesday, December 21st from 1:00 to 7:00 PM at our Presbyterian Church uh here in Geneva. Uh, Thursday, the 29th of December, 2:00 to 6:30 at the Hall Fire Department. And Friday, December 30th uh from 10:00 to 4:00 at Geneva General Hospital. Um, as far as um my report as liaison to the Geneva BID, um, the Geneva BID each year in coordination with the city, as you know, sponsors the tree lighting and the wagon rides. Um, this was on Friday, December 2nd. It was actually highly successful. Historically, our attendance is the greatest when it's snowing on that day. Um, it just families are really attracted to this event. But this year, the wind actually limited the participation. Even though it wasn't terribly cold, the wind was chilling. Um, and uh the BID uh actually made popcorn for 300 plus kids. And they actually ran out before the event concluded. So that in itself, not knowing the volume of the bags or the amount of popcorn that was popped, tells me right there that it was a successful event. The moral of the story of this is that if you think snow on the tree lighting ceremony, that's actually good for participation. Um, the other uh part of my report on the Geneva BID um is that we have not had a retreat in many, many years. And I'm pleased to report that we have a coordinated, paid, professional retreat for the BID Board tomorrow from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock. And um I know the entire board is uh is very much looking forward to that. And I'm assuming that our city manager and comptroller will also be um active participants. So um very much looking forward to that. Um, the H D C did not meet, and I apologize, uh Steph, that um this is my first month where I can't give you any money um or or no recycled envelope. But um my health in the last month has prevented me from um uh doing any firewood um uh sales, but I pledge to make up for that next month. So um I just want to wish everyone uh a very Merry Christmas and safe holidays, but also a safe every day. And if you have an opportunity um to go to a religious event, as the new expression is, just remember the reason for the season, and I'll see some of you in church. So um Happy New Year as well, and we'll see you in January. And that concludes my report.
Counsel Peeler?
Thank you, Tom. I want to wish all our residents a preemptive Happy New Year and Merry Christmas as well. Uh, on that, uh, I don't have a report from the Recreation Board, but what I do have is a bit of a holiday treat for our birthday. On January 1st, New Year's Day, there'll be two two-hour chunks at the Recs Department where anyone can skate. And you have to, it's first come, first served. You have to get there. It's um 11:30 to 1:30.
Right.
And then 2:00 to 4:00. And so stop down at the ice skating rink. I I don't think cocoa's free, though. I don't think I think you gotta pay for the cocoa. So but yeah, yeah. So that is uh, that's just a a nice little thing that we're doing for our birthday. So that really, that really concludes uh my report. Oh, you know, I wanted to kind of bring a historical tidbit to the table as far as boards and commissions and the council's authority. It's a historically accurate fact that this city council several years ago removed an entire board. They voted to remove an entire board. And that entire board also contested it and said that it was not allowed. And then it was reviewed and and it was and it was deemed it was allowed, and that whole board, every single person, every single member was voted off. So this is, this is really not, this is again, this is really criminally uncontroversial. And politicians and political appointments are not immune to political pushback. We all have free speech. But we also have consequences when we put ourselves out there for pol- for political appointment. Right? There's slander and libel laws that don't even apply for politicians. People can say horrible things about us because it's their opinion. And we and we kind of forfeit some of those protections under the Constitution. So uh just thank you very much and happy holidays, and I hope people can check out the rink on on January 1st for our birthday.
Counsel Regan?
Thank you. Um, I I want to first thank um the comments from the public tonight. Uh, in particular, uh you reminded me uh that the police study during my one-on-one with with uh our city manager, I expressed my extreme confusion over uh reading through that and trying to figure out exactly which way I was going. And I I it seems like it's sort of water over the dam or whatever, but I would love an opportunity to better understand it and what it's really telling us, what all those numbers are. The Finger Lakes Times reported um certain things that wasn't what I took away from it. Um, and I appreciate people in the community who will take the time to read it, probably a lot closer than I did. So um that's very helpful, and I always do enjoy uh public commentary in general. Um, so I want to start with the Green Committee. Um, I was able to join the Green, members of the Green Committee and the Town Sustainability Committee on a a really informative trip to the Echo Center in Rochester. Um, we toured the facility and we met with the people who operate it, who gave us um lots of good information about their recycling programs there. Uh, this is the second field trip that this group has taken, and I I I think that's pretty impressive. It takes, you know, over half a day to do all this. Um, and basically, the the goal in doing a lot of these kinds of educational outings is to help uh address the hopeful closing um and Counselor or Supervisor Kennedy's listening, I'm sure, uh of the landfill. Um, and to to figure out what we're going to do uh when that does happen. So um it's great to have this group, which serves as an advisory committee in the best way in that they've helped to educate me on things that are of concern to me and of the city. Um, and given me information and opportunities to learn more. So I do appreciate that. Also, the Green Committee is working on the the Mission Zero event. We're having a little bit of uh making an effort to find a good place to uh have that. That's just a all-day event. It's we're aiming for April 22nd, 2023 this year, which um is Earth Day. And it just features lots of vendors and educational programs, hands-on, family activities and so forth. Last year was at the Community Center. I had COVID, was unable to attend. But it was very successful. We had, I don't know, 200 to 300 people. And um I'm hoping it's bigger and better than ever this year. Uh, let's see. So uh Bill, Counselor Peeler has already mentioned part of of our planning on the 125th birthday. The January 1st date that he mentioned is the day we are holding uh an event. Um, and and it's actually the skating is kind of a part of it um to ha- to have something for the city to um hear about what the plans are to celebrate this and to offer them something. So we're really thrilled that they're willing to open up for public skating at no charge. Um, so in between those two segments that Counselor Peeler mentioned, at 1:30, you'll start to see publicity about this. We will have a kickoff event uh at the Dove Historic Dove Building. Um, we will have remarks from a couple people who just found out tonight that they're speaking, namely the mayor and the city manager. It will be a very brief um me- brief thing. It's uh we have a half an hour scheduled. We'll rev- uh we'll unveil our logo. Um, the many activities that are already being uh put into the week of celebration, which will be February 27th to March 4th. That that's when we're officially celebrating. But because the actual day that that we became a city uh was January 1st, 1898, we thought we'd do just an event to let you know what's in the works on it. So I encourage everyone, there'll also be cupcakes, of course, 125 of them. So I encourage everyone to go. I especially encourage my fellow counselors to go because it is a birthday of sorts for all of you, because that is the day 125 years ago that the city council was formed. So there you go. Happy birthday to us on January 1st, 2023. So uh you'll be hearing much more about that in the paper and every place else we can think of to get the word out. Um, I was happy to attend the lighting festivities, and I have to say uh forbid, a wonderful art walk downtown, which took place on Saturday uh last weekend after the tree lighting. Fantastic event. Um, and I I'll take a cue from our our, this is something you would usually say at a moment like this, to keep in mind our downtown merchants as you uh start your holiday shopping. Um, support our downtown merchant. And with that, I wish all of Geneva joyful holidays, and I look forward to uh spending 2023 with you all. Thank you.
Counsel Camera?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, first of all, my thanks go out I to Jessica Farrell and Scott Bose for their comments and their research that they made on uh the police uh information that they had and that uh we all have to digest and understand better. I think that's uh, so that was a, I think, a good service for us. I appreciate that very much. Um, the 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 is the second, the second point I I wanted to do was just basically make an announcement. I I know I've been kind of like a broken record, talking about the Genesee Transportation Council and the funding project of the of a project that would allow us to look at the feasibility of moving at least part of the Finger Lakes Railway Stockyard east so that we could open up the Sixth Ward to the to the lakefront. And I I guess I've come probably over the last year and a half, 18, 24 months, and said, you know, it's nice. We have this group and this committee, and they're doing research, et cetera. And then it was nice to hear about it, you know, less than a year ago, that there was funding for a formalized research project into doing this. And then for some reason, I felt like I'd been ghosted for six months. I haven't heard from Tom Harvey, who's the county planner and the person who's going to ramrod this project and everything else. And um fortunately, um on Monday evening, he sent through a plan uh for a an RFP, basically an RFP to hire a consultant who will work with the committee over the next year and will evaluate that that possibility and the feasibility of doing that. And um I'm very happy to just read one sentence from it. It's a 29-page proposal that's going out to consultants that will respond to this. But the, but at the very beginning, it says key information. And the third sentence in this paragraph says, "The project will also study the feasibility of relocating the Finger Lakes Railway Yard from near the Seneca Lake waterfront and study the relocation of the interconnection between that yard and the remainder of the Finger Lakes Railroad network to improve pedestrian and vehicle safety in downtown Geneva." So I think it's a really big deal. And I think, uh, you know, the the Greenways Project and all the money we spent on this and everything else and uh to open up uh um just, you know, can, you know, uh uh pathways around the city and everything else. One of the things that that study didn't really take a a big look at is moving this railroad ra- yard, which uh which could, and so its study talks about ways to go over the tracks and things like that, which are expensive possibilities. So I'm glad that we'll be able to get this into the mix where we literally can move track, get the railway down to one rail line between downtown Geneva and maybe Evans Street, which is where the cemetery starts, and open up Middle Street entirely to the lakefront and then get vehicle access across it from the Sixth Ward into the lakefront. That would really be a great thing for the Sixth Ward. I think it'll be, it'll it'll be good for the entire city because of economic development possibilities we can build and on that, and that's more lakefront being opened up to um development in a good way. So I I appreciate that. That's, um, otherwise, I I'm grateful that I'm, we're all here and that we're all um, you know, and that we've uh uh weathered an election and things are going to settle down, and uh we're going to have a good Christmas. And I hope everybody's with their families and there's not too much um um health issues uh going through this uh this holiday period. So thank you.
Counsel Salamandra?
After the last meeting, Councilors Noon, Galanese, and Brim approached me wanting to know more about the state of housing in Geneva. Rather than fill them all in privately, I thought that it would be more appropriate just to address everybody at once, the full council and the community. We, like communities across the country, are in a housing crisis, and we are behind solving it. Some of the conditions are Ontario County DSS reports their hotels are full with homeless families. Last year, 315 Ontario County schoolchildren were homeless. Family Promise was, which works with homeless families, reports that they have over 100 families on their waiting list. And in our entire county, there is not one shelter for homeless individuals and families. The number of homeless families in Geneva is growing, and we have absolutely nowhere to house them. But it's not just homelessness that is impacted by our housing crisis. It is making all of our renting residents poorer. Economists have determined that no household should be paying more than 30% of their income for housing. But in the Finger Lakes region, more than half of all renters are paying above 30% of their income on housing. That's more than half of our residents who can't save up for a mortgage, can't afford to shop downtown, can't afford to send their kids to daycare or summer camp or college. can't afford to send their kids to daycare or summer camp or college, can't afford to start a new business. And while all renters are impacted by the housing crisis, low-income renters are at particular risk of falling into deeper poverty, unsafe and crowded housing conditions and homelessness. Rents in Geneva have skyrocketed since the start of the pandemic and Section 8 vouchers no longer come close to covering the cost of rent. Many tenants are not having their leases renewed by landlords who think they can make more money from Airbnbs and remarketing as luxury housing. In other words, we have residents who have the funds and have the need for low-income housing and it is just simply not available. These numbers don't even reflect the full seriousness of the problem. People's stories are devastating. Through my work with the Geneva Housing Task Force, that's been working since the start of COVID-19, service providers have shared, shared stories about people with funds and desperate need who are being turned away. There are people who have been living in hotels for months, families who've been homeless for months, domestic violence victims being turned away for emergency housing because there is none. And there's no relief in sight. I am glad to hear that some of my fellow counselors are ready to take steps to address, address the housing crisis in Geneva and in Ontario County. We have said we are committed to economic development, but no one will build a business here if their employees can't find or afford housing. Tonight, we just passed a resolution. Our own city manager needed an extension because it was so hard to find housing here. It is very clear the first step to economic development is addressing our housing crisis. And there are solutions that this council could act on in the next year that would make a real difference. We could legislate rent caps. We could require new development to prioritize affordable housing. We could address zoning, making residential development more possible in the city. We could add a tax on short-term rentals. We could request more funds from the county. We could increase public transportation to the town where there, there is more room for new housing development. These are just some of the practical and doable solutions that the Housing Task Force has discussed. And if there is commitment from this council to actually act to do something to address this crisis, I would be thrilled to report that to the Housing Committee on Monday morning. They are the real experts on this issue and are more than eager to work with this council to take practical steps to address the serious and growing houses, housing crisis in our city.
Counselor Brim?
Uh, so the Housing Committee already did meet, but I have nothing to bring back, but I would like to thank all of our folks who came out tonight and have a happy holiday, everyone.
Counselor Galanese?
Um, mine's gonna be real brief. Um, during this buying season, I, I recommend and suggest that everyone shops local, locally owned businesses. They need us and, and right now is a, a very good time to get that money flowing into our community. Um, so I advise everyone to shop local before going anybody, going anywhere else. And I just want to wish everyone a very happy holidays, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and be safe.
Thank you. Um, I want to extend my thanks to staff for the tree lighting ceremony. It was just amazing. And all the people who made donations, it was just phenomenal. I, I can honestly say in my tenure on council, in many tree lighting ceremonies I've been to, I've never seen it as lit up or as festive as, as it has been. So no- nothing against previous staff, but, uh, it was, it was, it was great. So it was great to see that. It was great to see the participation. I was amazed at the, the Geneva Bike Group that were riding around with all their, their bikes were lit up. It was pretty cool seeing all the activity and the horse and, the horse carriage ride. That was, that was awesome. It's just, uh, it's a big winner every year. So thank you very much for all the effort that was put into that. And when we talk about, um, wishing our residents happy holidays, I, I just want to caution that we don't just talk about Christmas because there are other holidays. There's Hanukkah in Kwanzaa. So we just want to make sure we, we're very inclusive when we wish everybody a very happy holiday season and, uh, and an upcoming New Year. So thank you very much. We need a motion to adjourn at this time. Counselor Galanese, second by-
Everyone wants to stay, I guess.
Second by Counselor Camera. All-
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.